Okay, it is 6:30. We're going to call the Castle Hills regular city council meeting to order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. We're going to start with the invocation. Mr. Pinkston, will you lead us, please?
Good to see you. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, I want to thank you for this council that you have placed in these seats to care, guide, provide for this city. I pray that you would give them wisdom beyond their years and that their collective mind would be to the good, the best interest of this city. I want to thank you for how you've used this particular group of people. A very special way to bring about so much good in such short time to this city. I pray that the best years of Castle Hills are before us, not behind us. And just claim the promises of God over our city government and those who serve us on a daily basis on the city team. And thank you for the schools across this community and as we are able to witness Nicole being honored today, just thank you for the excellence that we find in both public and private education in our city here. We take great pride in that. Take great pride in being citizens and one of the greatest communities in South Texas, maybe the galaxy. And just thank, thank you for your presence here tonight in Jesus's name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkston. Next up, we have a pledge of allegiance. Captain Wagner, will you lead us? Thank you, Captain. First up, we have to recognize a young lady who is graduating from Castle Hills, the Christian school at Castle Hills, Ms. Nicole Gray, who had a GPA of 4.62 and is going on to University of Texas to study environmental engineering. This is one of the things that I was trying to do this this year going forward is recognize a valedictorians that have worked exceedingly hard doing really well at school. And Ms. Gray is a perfect example of that. So she has her parents here with her, Eric and Michelle Gray, and we want to recognize them. And Ms. Gray, for everything that she's done. And we have a small token of appreciation for your hard work. And hopefully, we can do this again soon when you graduate from UT. Okay, next up, we have introduction of new employee, Ms. Amy Pritchard, our deputy court clerk, Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor Council. How have Ms. Zelenic come up and introduce Ms. Pritchard?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would like to introduce you to our newest employee, Amy Pritchard. She is the wife of the Hollywood Park Police Chief and a mother of two girls. She does come with some experience for the court. She did work at Sandra Day O'Connor for nine years, and she's got great experience with customer service, office organization, and data entry. So I'd like you to stop by some time and come by and say hi to her.
Welcome to the City of Castle Hills, Ms. Pritchard. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have non-agenda items, citizens to be heard. We only have one person signed up, Ms. Susana Rios. If you would, if I just state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
I think everybody here knows me. Susana Rios, I live on Dogwood Lane, 118 Dogwood Lane. I'm coming here today to talk about the article that was in the newspaper. I was very disappointed because I've had nothing but good things to talk about Castle Hills. And I wanted to urge people, especially those, not people that are here, maybe the young lady here, but people watching on YouTube. They need to know that when they hear something negative, when somebody knocks on your door and they're telling you something negative, something dark about Castle Hills, they need to call the mayor, they need to call your city council people. Anybody in Castle Hills, they need to get the information right before they go out and multiply that dark news and create all this chaos. It's so time consuming. And it's expensive for our city. So that was my only thing that I wanted to talk about tonight is that people need to call the mayor, call the office, call Mr. Repelli, anybody to find out if what these people are spreading around this dark, dark, you know, information. They need to find out if it is true before they sign petition or they sign on to go multiply the dark news. I think it's really important, and that's, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rios. I don't think we have anybody else signed up, so we'll get straight into the consent agenda. Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. May. Second by Mr. Joyce. Any discussion on favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council. First up, we have 6.1, a public hearing on an application request for a special use permit from Veronica Valdez at 2104 Northwest Military Highway, Castle Hills, Texas, 78213, more particularly described as CB 5778 Block 9, Lot 15 and 16 to perform permanent makeup services. It's 6:38, and we're going to open the public hearing. If we don't have anybody signed up to speak, we will close the public hearing at 6:30, and we'll have you come up next, on the next agenda item. 6.2 is discussion of possible action on ordinance number 2022-07-12 on an application request for a special use permit from Veronica Valdez at 2104 Northwest Military Highway, Castle Hills, Texas, 78213, more particularly described as CB 5778 Block 9, Lot 15 and 16 to perform permanent makeup services. Ms. Valdez, if you want to make a couple of comments before we get into it, you're more than welcome to. You pull the mic down just a little bit.
I'm here in behalf of Veronica Valdez. She's out of town in Paris right now, so I came as her manager to stand before you guys.
Perfect.
And so, right, permanent cosmetics has been performed there for over 20 years, and we want to just continue to provide that service as we have been doing.
Okay, perfect. We see these quite often, so I think we're good. Council, do we have any questions, comments, concerns for, what was your name?
Angelica Ramos.
From Ms. Ramos. Do we have a motion? Mr. May? Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Ms. Danes, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Ms. Ramos. Item 6.3, public hearing on an application request for a special use permit from Veronica Valdez at 2211 Northwest Military Highway, Suite 110, Castle Hills, Texas, 78213, more particularly described as CB 5778 Lot 22, CHCB 219, to perform permanent makeup services. It is 6:40, and we will open the public hearing. If we don't have anybody signed up to speak, we will close the public hearing at 6:40. Next, we have discussion of possible action ordinance number 2022-07-12A on an application request for a special use permit from Veronica Valdez 2211 Northwest Military Highway, Suite 110, Castle Hills, Texas, 78213, more particularly described as CB 5778 Lot 22, CHCB 219 to perform permanent makeup services. Ms. Ramos.
Thank you, guys, for taking the time to hear our motion. And, and again, at 2211, they've been first performing this service for 20 years, and we would like to just continue doing so.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Ramos. Council, Mr. Joyce.
May I move that we approve ordinance number 2022-07-12-A?
Second.
We have a motion on Mr. Joyce, a second by Mr. Manny. Discussions? Mr. Isbrand.
Just before we vote, Mayor, you alluded to the fact that we've had a number of these come before us before, and I hope that at some time, the council will consider sending a request to the zoning commission to consider whether it should require SUPS for the for permitting permanent makeup or services in Castle Hills.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. No further discussion. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Ms. Ramos, for being here. And next up, we have presentation, discussion, and possible action on the fiscal year end, December 31, 2021, annual financial report as prepared by Martinez Rosario and Company LLP. Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor Council. This is our annual audit for FY21. Present today, we have Mr. Milo Martinez of Martinez Rosario and Company. This is the second year they've done an audit for the city of Castle Hills. He's here to give you sort of the feedback and discuss any portions of the audit you might have, and in front of you is an agenda with a management letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley, and Mr. Martinez.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Thank you.
Can we have you pick the microphone up just a little bit so we can hear you better?
About now.
Much better.
All right. You should have an outline. Then I've got a one-page outline on my presentation. And I want to start off with a large report that you've gotten, the audit report, and then move on to the other two communications. On the audit report, again, this is for your fiscal year that ended December 31, 2021, and the objective of our audit is the report that we've issued or the opinion, which is found on pages one through three. And they've changed the format from previous years, this year, and so any, any calendar year-end entities are required to you, were required to use a new audit report. And so that's what's laid out here. And now, instead of having the opinion back on second or third page, it's at the very front. So again, that's you have a clean or an unmodified opinion that you've had in the previous years. And it talks about the financial statements that we've audited, which are your governmental activities, your major funds, and any other fund information. So it's the entire operations of the city for the period, as it said, the balance sheets or the financial position are as of December 31, 2021, and for the year then ended. And so those are, are in there. And the, so the first paragraph tells you what we've audited. The second paragraph has, contains the opinion. So the opinion, so in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present in all material respects the financial position of the governmental activities and each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city as of December 31, 2021, and respective changes in financial position for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the US. So again, that's where you want to be. That's unmod, that's a clean, unmodified opinion. And then the basis for our opinion is listed there, the procedures that we performed. So we conducted the, the audit following accounting standards in the US. And it talks about our responsibilities to be independent and the ethical responsibilities that we have back to you and that we're to, to do our work and, and adhere to our standards and that we have to follow. The next paragraph is a section on the responsibility for the financials, which is management's responsibility and including management and the city council. So that's what we talk about there as far as the financial. You have a system that prepares financial statements and the, all the accounting is done. So we've tested that. And again, we found it to be adequate. We've got a few comments that we've gotten from previous years, but again, there is no significant or material issue there. On the second page is the auditor's responsibility for the audit. So it tells about our responsibilities, the things that we do to obtain evidence that's reasonable. It's not absolute because we don't look at 100% of your transactions, but we sample and we test. We look at the trends. We look at subsequent, we'll call subsequent events, things that happened to verify some of the things that occurred as of December 31. And we're looking to make sure that they're, that we could detect any material misstatements. So again, that's what we're looking for there. And you know, the, we're also looking that there might be, you know, errors or fraud or collusion or forgery, anything that would lead to either an override of controls or for an arson to be there. There are none of those kinds of items. And then in performing our audit, this is a whole section that's, that's new. So just tell you, so it tells you a little bit more about our process, what we do. So in performing this in accordance with auditing standards here in the US, we have to exercise professional judgment and maintain a skepticism throughout the audit. And then we look at, we assess the risks of how your internal controls and your operations work as to how they produce the financial products and the different controls in your different departments. We look at all of that and to how to rely on how to test it. So that's what the next bullet does. We make sure we understand how your control is designed so that it's functioning and it's built so that it can function in an efficient and effective manner and that would catch any errors or adjustments or things. And so that's all functioning fine. The, and then we look at your policies and, and procedures and also your, your disclosures and your financials, because that's all part of that. So all of that stayed consistent from the previous year. There was no new guidance that came out that was applied there. And then from all of that, we put together information and we come up with our judgment so that we can say, are the numbers in good shape? And we also analyze what's called a going concern. So we look at, will, are the operations and such that there would be a, consider a concern that the entity would not continue because of financial conditions. And again, none of that occurred, but it's just some of the general things that we look at. And then, then we're going to, I'm going to have some more communications later on in my presentation that I'll talk about. So we'll, we'll cover those. There's some required supplementary information since you're a government agency, you follow government auditing or government accounting standards. And so those, besides the financials and the disclosures, require some supplementary information. So these are in here, which is the management discussion and analysis, your budgetary schedules, and then some schedules that relate to your pension and your post-employment benefits. All of those are standard. Again, those were there in the prior year. It's just they're discussed, you know, that, that's been done. So all of that matches up with your records and from your outside party to prepare that, the actuaries, all of that's been matched up to this. Then there's some other supplementary information. There's some comparative schedules that are later on in the report. And so again, all of that matches either this year's audit or last year's, where the numbers are coming from. So that's where all that comes together. So that's, that covers a new report. But again, the, the highlight is that you have an unmodified or a clean opinion. So that's what I wanted to cover there. The, there is a schedule in here. I believe it's page 50. We'll get to the 51 on the large report, and it's got your budget to actual comparative information. And so it's on, it's the schedule of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, and it compares budget to actual for your general fund. So this is what your, your operation, the main fund that you've got, which is your, your general fund. And so you can see there, as far as, just if you're looking at total revenues, you had, you budgeted pretty close. You were, you were a little bit over your budget by about $795. Now, you had some overages on the expenditures where some things changed. I think some of it was through COVID, some of those line items in your, for your fire department. And then you had a little bit more capital outlay than what you had anticipated. So again, those are all shown there. At the end, the, the actual expenditures exceeded budgeted by $179,000. And so on, on a, the variance, you, you did have a negative variance, but again, you can see the different elements. Some of it was covered with the transfer in that you had. As a total, if you look about two-thirds of the way down, it says excess deficiency of revenues and other except revenues over, under expenditure. So basically, your expenditures were $15,729 greater than your revenue. So again, for an operation this size, you're budgeting pretty close. You did have some variances, but again, it's all, it shows there that you're well within, and you had plenty of fund balance to cut, to absorb the deficit. So that was not, it's not a significant one on a seven, you know, 7.7.1 million dollar budget. That covers, that concludes my discussion of the large report. You do have another report called the communication with those charged with governance. And so if you can go to that one, here's some required communications that we're supposed to present to the council, since we work for the council and on the conduct of our audit. So our responsibilities, again, as we've mentioned, in my opinion, we're following the government auditing standard or the US standards, which the AICPA sets. So that's what we apply to audit your financial information. And then we, we audited the different schedules that you had here. That's what the second paragraph there covers. The moving on to page two, again, we did, we issued an in relation to opinion on those extra schedules in the back that are from previous years or the current year. And then there's a part that's the introductory section, which is mostly the flow charts and on the org chart and some other things. Those are not audited, but we have to, we have anything that's with our report, we have to disclose and say, what's our responsibility? Do we audit or not? And that's, again, that normally would not be audited, and it's not. So that's, that's the norm. Under the plan, scope, and timing, again, we were looking at the entire operations of the city. We don't here, we talked, I mentioned earlier that we don't look at 100% of your transactions. We test it. We rely on your controls. We test those controls, and that's what we've done there to get reasonable assurance. And again, we're looking for material misstatements, whether they're caused by error, fraudulent financial reporting, misappropriation of assets, or violation of laws or regulations. So we didn't, none of that is there that we need to communicate in relation to that. We started approximately middle of May, and we issued a report dated the 27th of June. Under qualitative, I'm on page three now, the significant audit matters and qualitative aspects of your accounting. Again, those are all in your note one to your financials. There were no new GASB that you needed to adopt. There are GAZBs out there, but they didn't, they didn't apply to the city. And so none of that need to apply. So everything's within the authoritative standards. There were no new, new standards there. You do have estimates. We want to make sure that you're aware of that. There are estimates. They relate to your allowance for uncollectible accounts, your taxes and other things. So we've looked at your allowance, looked in the historical trends and all that. We found those to be reasonable. There's also, you assign lives for capital assets or either construction, or you purchase equipment or all of your lives that you're assigning, all of that are reasonable within the norm of the standards. And that leads to depreciation based on those lives. So those all have estimates. And then the other large estimates that are in here are your net pension liability and your total OPEB liability or other post-employment. Those, you've got actuaries that provide the information that there's sufficient funding on all that, and you've been doing your minimums that you're required to. All of that's moving along fine. So you're in good set shape. And so, but those are all estimates. As far as difficulties, we had no difficulties encountered. We got full cooperation from management, from staff, and all the items that we requested. As far as corrected and uncorrected misstatements, there are adjustments, and they're attached at the back of this report. It starts after page five. So all, they're pretty much what we do each year. Some of some accruals, working with the, the property taxes and depreciation and some constructions. All of those are pretty norm. There were there's nothing really significant there to, to point out. There were no disagreements. Everything was done in the normal course of us conducting our audit and in, in anything that dealt with financial reporting or accounting. So all of that was done in the normal course of, of what we normally do as, as far as conducting an audit. There's a management representation, representation letter dated the 27th, which is the date of our report. There were no consultations by management, talking to other independent accountants, seeking a second opinion on a certain matter. So that didn't exist there. As far as any other audit findings or issues that would impact us as far as continuing to serve would be retained and reappointed. There's nothing there. Everything was done in the normal discussion of conducting our, our audit. On other matters, it talks about, we did some reporting on your required supplementary information. And again, we've, all of that matches up with what's in your financials. Then the, we've issued an in relation to opinion on some of the other schedules that are in the back coming from this year or from prior year that are comparative. So all of those are, are audited. And again, as I mentioned earlier, we didn't do anything with the introductory information. Again, with this norm. And again, this report is for your use. If there's no questions or anything on, comments on that, then I would move on. I'm going to move on to my last item, which is a management letter. And the management letter will either have any new comments or any comments from the previous year and give a status on that. So we're, we're repeating the first item, one dealt with accounting personnel, and I know you've been trying to hire and add, and that just, you've got some consultants that are helping you, but as far as getting some permanent and you up, you've promoted within your own ranks. So we're seeing that. And it, it so you've made a lot of headway on that, that area. And the, I think just of the permanent finance director general positions, that's really lacking, but it's just, it's a hard market. Everybody's having a tough time. It just, and the more the dollars have moved, you know, $15,000, $20,000 more than what you were hoping to get by, because the market has moved and inflation, between inflation and everybody wanting to work remote. It's just really a tough market to, to find people. But but anyway, like I said, we were given the, the stuff timely and we're able to work through it quickly and get done. And the payroll process, again, we're still feel that ought to be relooked at. The, so that I think there were some, some upgrading that was going to be done, but again, we, just to make sure that you're using your, your resources and it's getting done efficiently and quickly. So we still, we've seen some improvements there. We think there can still be some more. And that's what we've got that one. The last one was dealing with capital assets. In the past, the auditors kept most of the records, the detailed records for you, and that's, they're your records. They need to be kept in-house. And so that's been how it's now in-house. It's moved, they're reconciled, the details are there. And so that, that has been cleared and, and resolved that situation. So that, that got improved. I don't have any other comments. Mayor and council members.
Mr. Joyce.
Just a quick question on the payroll process issue that you commented on. You mentioned that the outsourcing was a really good way of handling that, and management's response was a preference for software, going to InCode, which has been in the works for quite some time. Do you have any preference on that? Does it matter? As long as it's more efficient, you're good with it?
No, I mean, neither one will work. It's just, right now, I mean, you're tight on personnel, and so a lot of times the outsourcing, some of that can help. But both, both methods will work. You just, I mean, once you, you go whichever one you go with it, you set up the procedures to reconcile it and have the proper controls, because even though you, let's say it's ADP or whichever payroll service you use, you just got to, they're just a processor. You have to make sure that the input gets done right and the output works out and that, that get reconciled and goes to the GL. But either one works. I just, my, I, as my personal preference, I'd rather outsource it, but you can do it either way. There's no, there's nothing magical about which one is better. You just have to staff it right and make sure that people, you have the right, they have the time and the resources to do it. So.
Thank you.
Mr. Paul.
Cities that are our size, maybe even smaller, a little bigger. Have you run across where they don't have a completely integrated system, accounting system?
Well, some of them may not have all the different modules that go with it, because it's just been a budget constraint, or they just haven't done it. So some will have a complete, where they have all the modules. Let's say for InCode, they'll have all the different, the one that does fixed assets or the payroll or some of the other subsidiaries. But it's normal that you'll have a mix, and you prefer to have as much of it integrated, but you know, the, the decisions have been made along the way. So as you're coming along, you know, we certainly would, would, I know you guys have wrestled with that over the, the years. I know you guys have wrestled with that over the, the years. As much as you can integrate, that would be the best way.
Well, I know. And I believe it was. April of two thousand eighteen, the then council. Approved to go to in code because we already had some of the modules.
Right.
And it was the natural step because of the way things were. Segmented, if you will, or not, you know, double entry, having to do the work twice.
Right. As much as you can have an automated process, the better it is because you input it once and it flows to where it needs to where it's.
Well, the new council in two thousand eighteen decided that we didn't need that. And so the next month, as soon as they got in, they did away with it. And I was just curious. I strongly think that we need to look at that and make sure because we seem to be growing a little bit in the area. And because I believe in integrated system. Would be a lot more productive and helpful. When we have lack of personnel.
Right, definitely.
Okay.
Certainly to have the, the bells and whistles and, and because it also can produce other data that you can use for analysis and things of that nature. But you know, you can use technology to do it and, and because a lot of people, you know, they're comfortable, you're doing a spreadsheet, but. Again, there could be errors in the spreadsheet and the more things where it's already.
And then they have to put the spreadsheet down and then they have to put it back into the computer over here and all this. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Martinez, I have two questions. What's an average salary looking like for a finance director right now?
You're probably looking at about ninety five to a hundred grand is probably what you're looking at.
And the other question that I had was kind of in what my colleagues have hit on already in regards to that module that will help us. And I, I tried to explain this earlier this week and I just wanted to make sure that I explained it correctly, but. Our current system does not integrate. So somebody from finance has to manually move numbers over. From one software to another software, which. In and of itself leaves potential for. Accidental mistakes or.
You're right. It could be, the errors could be a variety of things. Let's say you're, you're using a, a spreads. Either the systems aren't integrated, so you have to create an entry and post it in the system instead of it flowing from the system that's integrated and posting to the general ledger. And, you know, or the other thing, you have a manual system where you'd like to spreadsheet. So you create a spreadsheet and then you, you. You create a journal entry from there and you post it in there. So you've got those actions and then you have to make sure that your spreadsheet is locked down. So that somebody doesn't come in and change a formula. You can check, spreadsheet can look, you know, like the number that up, but you check them manually with a calculator and it doesn't work or the recalculation. Because somebody moved a cell around and you can put the locks and all of that, but a lot of times that those things haven't been, you know, put into the, the, the software that, that the, the spreadsheet. But anything, again, if you can integrate it, it's already there, it's just going to give you a lot more power that you can work with the data much easier. And also you've got some built in controls. It, it'll, if there's an out of balance situation, it, it would give you a report to say, this, the data doesn't match up or balance so that it can help. And so that you don't have to have the, you still have to have some review processes in there, but again, you're taking a lot of the human element out of that. And so it makes it a lot easier.
So to Mr. Paul's point, the fact that this has been on our audit for, I guess, over five years now. Does that negatively impact the city anywhere being that there's a deficiency that our auditors have told us that we haven't addressed?
No, I mean, at the end, the numbers were getting adjusted, you know, and, and we don't have any significant variances or a bust that's gone on. But. You, you want to lower your risk. And so that's what the recommendation is to bring your risk lower on that because you have some exposure there because you're having to do. They're, they're just the, the human handling of the data is more and the potential that something gets skewed. In, in the, let's say it's if it's a spreadsheet, if it's a program, it's not so much because it'll produce it. And then the person just has to transcribe it into an entry and put it into the system. But it just strengthens your controls. If you get it set up and designed right and it's functioning properly, it just shrinks and then, and it also gives the person. It will make efficiencies for your staff also so that they can run. More data and produce more things with just fewer people, just because the power of a computer. And the program.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Counsel, do we have any other questions? Mr. Isbrand. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the audit or accept the audit? We have a motion by Mr. Paul to accept the audit.
Second.
Second, by Mr. May. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Mr. Martinez for being here.
Thank you. Counselor, thank y'all very much for allowing us to serve as your external auditor. Thank you.
And next up, we have six point six discussion and possible action on ordinance twenty twenty two dash zero seven dash one two. Dash B amending the city of Castle Hills code of ordinances, chapter twenty six nuisances, Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor Council. If you recall, in October of eighteen, the city council passed. A nuisance ordinance to address. Reoccurring nuisances, properties related to code compliance, public safety. Basically protect the public health, safety, welfare of residents. What we are looking to do today is amend this. This is consistent with other cities. Who have sort of extra teeth related to the enforcement side of nuisance ordinances. And like I said, it's consistent with what other cities do and. Ryan Henry's office, our prosecutor, worked with Mr. Schnall on it to incorporate. The language as well as Mr. Zemiron on the code compliance and public safety side. Because he was involved in the, the first ordinance in that. So the idea today is that we're going to be amending. Certain sections and adding it to the nuisance ordinance that exists.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. Isbrand.
Mayor Council, I'd move approval of ordinance two thousand twenty two dash oh seven dash twelve dash B.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. A second by Mr. Joyce. Do we have discussion? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Counsel, if you'll indulge me, I wanted to jump to. I'm sorry, six point nine. I feel like it's prudent before going to six point seven. Mr. Rappley, we're going to switch to six point nine presentation and update on city capital projects.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Ultimately, I was going to do this update because we did have a couple of change orders with these projects, but. Our engineers are still working with contractors on those costs. Just for background purposes, I'll start with the Banyan Carrollwood project, the drainage project. It began in August of twenty one. The scope of the project was to alleviate flooding in that area of Banyan and Carrollwood, which was considered in within watershed three. This also was in conjunction with the first phase of the drainage improvements done on Banyan to the outfall there at Tamworth. The project, like I said, did have a couple of change orders. We'll bring those forward next month for city council's review and approval. And then right now we are working closely with the contractor and engineer to basically close out the project. We develop a punch list. And we're making sure that they have cross the Ts and dot the Is before we provide final payment. Also that if you look at one oh five Carrollwood in that section where there was a sewer replacement. Saw should be out there. They're out there yesterday, today, and probably tomorrow doing a mill and overlay of that section that was all paid for by saws. Sawz also did fund about three hundred and twenty three thousand of this project, which was a total of one point nine, one point six to the city. And then CPS Energy did pay for a portion of the project of about seventy thousand. Like I said, we are closing that out. We have a punch list already and we should be within the next thirty days. Completing that punch list and paying the final payment to close out that capital project. And that was funded with the twenty twenty drainage certificates obligations. Right now, street improvements phase two, that was ten streets that were reconstructed. At Water Shalimar blew it from Travertine to Colossec, Travertine. Trillium, Honeysuckle, Lemonwood Drive to Persimmons, Lemonwood Drive to Cremaria, and then Fox Hall to Fox Hall Cove. And then Roletto Drive to Lemonwood to Northwest Military. That began in November of two thousand twenty one. Obviously, the scope was full depth reconstruction. The construction costs for that project were one point nine. The, with the city had already done some change orders back in March on that project, which were already approved by city council. Those were funded out of the twenty twenty street certificates of obligations. And then we will bring forward a change order next month for city council's approval. And that was during the project on Travertine, it was decided in conjunction with the engineers to move it all the way to Town View. So that will be an adjustment to the budget. And like I said, we will bring the, we're finalizing that punch list. I'm working with the engineers, Mr. Harada closely. And our contractors to make sure that they've met all the specs and they've done all the full restoration requirements of the project. The third project is Austin Bridge. They're out on Briar Cliff right now. They're within a week of putting down the final asphalt. They've done all the flat work. And so they're going to be closing that project out on that street in particular in about a week. And since then, they've started on Blewett. Shalamar and Watlin with the excavation portions. Again, this is a reconstruction and this was a one point one million dollar project. This is supposed to end at the end of this year, if not end of December, early part of January. And. We have attached the schedule since this is a current and ongoing project for the next five months. The schedule's on the city website so residents can see the process, which is going to be involved on their street from month to month. One thing I'd also like to remember, recall is there was also a project done on ranch land acres, water main replacement project. This was a saws project. And I know some residents are very happy about getting their streets done in this area. I, I would like to. Thank Mr. Harada and Mr. Zamiron because when this project first started, they talked about just doing water line replacement and, and doing trench repairs. And so they both reminded saws and the contractor. That we had a restoration ordinance that you needed to go curb to curb for a full mill and overlay. And so I know that they completed that at the end of the week last week, and I think that they're closing that out as well. So those are the two projects, two major projects being closed out within the next month and then one. The street improvements phase two will be closed out at the end of this year, if not January. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Counsel, do we have any comments, questions, concerns? Okay, we will jump back to six point seven discussion and possible action on calling election regarding the issuance of certificates of obligations. I, I ask that we have this item on the agenda. Knowing full well that tonight we cannot legally call for an election. Because of the way that certificates of obligation are written for our type of city. That being said. I think this council has shown its commitment to radical transparency. And the goal here is to confirm our intent, have a discussion about what we're trying to do. And decide if this is something that we still want to do so that we're letting the citizens know. At the earliest possible moment. And if it is something that this council wants to do. When it's legally acceptable, as Mr. Friedman will tell us. Hopefully the council is willing to make that decision and continue investing in the city of Castle Hills. I know that all of y'all have gone knocked on doors and by and large people seem. Pretty happy that their streets are getting fixed, that their flooding is getting addressed. And that the city looks a little bit better. Looks like we care about our city. That being said, I know that Mr. Friedman has some comments and so we'll give him the floor.
This is very similar to the, what I call tax rate impact analysis that we were considering going through the C O issuance process. Certainly we've received a petition to address Mayor Trevino's initial comment. Can't call a bond election at this meeting in order to call a bond election, whether it was a normally called general obligation bond election or in our case. As a result of a C O petition, we have a window no sooner than ninety days prior to the November election, no later than seventy eight days. So that window puts us for you all as a governing body to call that election at your Thursday, August sixteenth meeting. So that'll be the next time for you all to make a determination. That you're actually calling the bond election, adopting an ordinance calling for that election to be placed on the November eighth, twenty twenty two ballot. So with that in mind. This analysis reflects and what's different from when we were going through this process earlier in the spring. We are two weeks away from getting our certified taxable values from Bear Appraisal District. They start sending preliminary numbers in April, late April. So what I've attached here, this top line reflects fiscal year twenty twenty two. That's the current year that we're in. Based on a freeze adjusted taxable assessed value of five hundred ninety nine million and change. The next line down would be for the, the year that we were planning to, for the C O's to take effect and to have our first payment. We were assuming that taxable values would conservatively go up five percent. The initial run of preliminary values from Bear Appraisal District was up thirteen point five five percent. The latest run from July eighth come down a little bit as you have folks protest their taxes and they're subject to arbitration. That number's decreased to six hundred and ninety five million dollars in anticipation of further protesting or. Seeing some more value shaved off over the course of the next two weeks as folks go through that, I eliminated additional ten million dollars. So that's where that six hundred and eighty five million dollar comes in. Fiscal year twenty twenty three. The result of your tax values going up so much is that your maintenance and operations tax rate will be forced down this coming year. The Senate Bill two that took effect, the last legislative session placed caps on how much. Cities and counties can raise their M and O taxes in a given year. And they defined the, the new tax rate structures being you could adopt the no new revenue rate, which used to be called the effective rate, which means you generate the exact same amount of levy as you did the prior year. Which would be a decrease in your rate as values go up. And then the, what used to be called the rollback rate, which had an eight percent cap, meaning you could raise the prior year's levy by up to eight percent without. Being subject to a tax ratification election was decreased to three and a half percent. So you can increase up to your voter approval rate, three and a half percent without being subject to a petition and election. And that's a generating roughly three and a half percent more levy than the prior year. So my analysis is assumed that the city will increase its M and O levy three and a half percent. Year over year. You all, as you're going through the budget process, are well aware that your cost for providing services due to inflation and a very strong labor market are far in excess of three and a half percent in all likelihood. I know that's been the case for most of the cities that I represent. So you're never, you're probably not catching up, even as you raise up that three and a half percent. You're not probably generating what you would probably like or need for the city's general operating budget. And this is without any consideration of debt, but that's what I'm assuming. So you can see as you get closer to the far right side of this page, the M and O required rate is set to drop. Potentially three and a half cents this next year. So tax rates are coming down. There's legislation in place that really forces your hand that your maintenance and operations rate will come down over time. So with that, because those values are so much stronger, as we went into this process in the, earlier in the spring, talking about funding seven million dollars worth of C O's. Four and a half million would be paid for from, ultimately four and a half million were planned to be paid for from the ad valorem taxes of the city. We were looking at a one hundred dollar increase on a four hundred thousand dollar home. As we've updated the numbers. And what this shows, and it's still subject to taxable values being certified in two weeks, is that you can fund five and a half million dollars of that seven million dollars potentially going to the voters. Without having to increase the taxes on that four hundred thousand dollar home by that same hundred dollars. Now, again, this is all subject to the certification of those values on July twenty fifth. So we'll have more information of August sixteenth. When the city staff has had an opportunity to run those final values through truth and taxation, which are the worksheets provided by. The, all of the different tax offices around the state where you plug in all of your values, what's new value, et cetera. To determine what those rates are. It's formulaically driven. City doesn't get to just arbitrarily choose what it's new, no new revenue rate, voter approval rate are. It's formulaic and it's the same for every city around the state. Once we have that information, we'll be able to really tie this up better, but I think this is a very close indication of what the tax rate structure could look like. So we've gotten a. So we've gotten a lot of value this year. Is there a guarantee that we're going to grow at 10% next year? Certainly not. So I've estimated, and I think this will prove to be very conservative, but 3% growth for each of the next three years. And so with that in mind, it, that'll slowly bring the MNO rate down however slightly. Or I'm sorry, it'll start increasing that MNO rate back up however slightly because 3%, we've got a half percent delta between the, the voter approval rate limitation and the growth rate that I've chosen here. Again, out of an abundance of conservatism, and it still shows that we can get this certificate of obligation or what would be a general obligation bond done within the tax rate structure that the city currently has. Right now, your total tax rate is roughly 52 and a half cents. This could still get done at 52 and a half cents ultimately. And so by August 16th, I hope to be able to demonstrate with hard figures what that looks like. The other thing that I've changed within this model is the interest rate assumption. Since the beginning of 2022, but certainly even since May, we've seen interest rates continue their climb north. So we'd be looking at interest rates right now, probably just north of 4%. I've run these at 4 and a half percent. We're starting to see interest rates taper off. They've even come down in the municipal bond market slightly. We've seen the treasury bonds come off their high however slightly, but there's a lot of volatility in the market still. We're seeing big swings. We're seeing widening credit spreads between treasuries and municipal bonds. We've seen a lot of what they call fund outflows. People, the mutual funds who are investing in municipal bonds have been selling their portfolio. What that does when you sell bonds and they're selling very large tranches, billions of dollars in outflows every month is what's been seen for the last several months. That forces the price of bonds down as you put more supply into the market, prices go down, interest rates go up as a result. So we'll continue to keep an eye on that. There's certainly nothing that any of us can do individually to affect interest rates, but try to estimate interest rates on the conservative side and we'll just continue to see how that goes. For the purposes of this analysis, we've got level principal and interest repayment. So to the extent interest rates go up beyond that 4 and a half percent, there's still some wiggle room to try to meet those tax rate targets in the next year as if we were to proceed to get this financing done and meet whatever promise, quote unquote, you all make to the voters entering into this bond election. So I'll be able to write a better update come August, but this is where things stand now. And then behind that is just the pro forma analysis of the drainage fund that would fund that one and a half million dollars for drainage improvements. Five and a half, one and a half equals the $7 million that was noticed in that notice of intention and which was petition two months ago. So with that, the only other thing that, that I'd like to mention, I'm sure you all have read, but I certainly read the Express News article that came out and it was somewhat disheartening for me. And this is more of a personal aside than anything that I felt that having sat through the meeting and then worked with your city staff and bond attorney to craft responses to the Express News to questions that they asked relative to the CO petition and, and process, I found their article to be wanting in several areas. The first of which is certificates of obligation are not issued strictly in the case of emergency. By and large, they are not issued in the case of emergency whatsoever. The Certificate of Obligation Act of 1971 outlines and makes very clear what you can issue certificates of obligation for. Infrastructure and, and just about every single type of project the city could undertake other than funding ongoing operations of the city can be done so with certificates of obligation. The state legislature took action as late as the last legislative session through House Bill 1869, which does put further restrictions on what you can issue certificates of obligation for. Very broadly, the two limitations that they put in place where you cannot finance city halls, new city halls with certificates of obligation or new libraries. You can finance anything related to public safety, infrastructure improvements, et cetera, through the use of certificates of obligation. And you can finance certificates of obligation for any debt that would be quote unquote self-supported. I point that out because your drainage improvements are self-supported. They have an independent revenue stream of the city's ad valorem tax rate that goes to repay those certificates of obligation. So I think that's a very important fact for you all to, to be mindful of that this certificate of obligation was throughout the process, not just by Tamco, your financial advisor, but your bond attorneys who write the opinion as to the tax exemption of the COs and the COs that would otherwise go, just as your 2020 certificates of obligation do, to the Attorney General for the State of Texas's office for their review and ultimate approval. Just like your certificates of obligation in 2020 were approved by the Attorney General. Once the Attorney General offers their opinion and allows you to close on the COs, they become incontestable in a court of law because the highest jurisdiction in the land has given their tacit approval to proceed through closing. So with all of that in mind, everything that the city did leading into that CO issuance process were completely above board appropriate and standard for how cities finance their improvements. Certificates of obligation are used very broadly, as we discussed before, as a means of financing at the most effective interest rate for utility system improvements and other self-supporting revenue streams because you can pledge the full faith and credit, so to speak, of the city of Castle Hills, helping you get the lowest interest rate possible. If COs were to not be a financing tool for cities, you'd be issuing revenue bonds. You'd be issuing multiple different series of bonds, driving costs of issuance up by having to get ratings on every single issuance you go through and then having more restrictive bond covenants like debt service reserve funds and having additional bonds tests and, and rate covenants that say we're going to generate 1.1 times the net income necessary to support this debt service, which leads to higher rates, utility fees, et cetera. So certificates of obligation have their place and certainly projects can be taken to the voters at any time and that's certainly fine as well. But I found that the, the article left a lot to the imagination and led you to need to click on hyperlinks to go find information that could have just as plainly been put into the main body of the article and maybe given a, a more accurate perspective. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions if I've left anything out. Mr. Rappley or Mr. Trevino, I'm happy to, to expand on anything and answer any questions that you all have.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Real quick, Mr. Joyce, I just want to add for clarity, the streets that were intended to be serviced by this issuance of debt, which was Ralletto, Dandelion, Lundblade, Cotillion, Peg Sue, Phlox, Parade, Persimmon, Glen Tower and Northmantin. And as far as drainage projects, it was going to be Northmantin and Glen Tower, I believe. Mr. Joyce, you had a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, if I may impose on Mr. Friedman to talk about costs moving forward. I think we, we talked about that briefly at your last visit. But I wonder, given this new environment we're in now, if you'd be good enough to sort of review. We know that the cost of the election itself is going to be roughly $7,000 or something like that. But if I recall, you said something about the cost that we have to do our rating again, redo the rating?
We will. The city, as we went through that process and, and your bond attorneys, financial advisor, we only collect a fee when you've successfully closed on a financing. So that's part of the, the, the price of poker, so to speak. The rating agencies, however, expect to be paid after they've gone through that process. And so the city and you all took subsequent action after I was last here to approve that payment to the rating agency. We negotiated a lower fee with them, but we'll have to go back through that rating process again. Now expect and we'll negotiate if we do proceed into a financing, you know, sometime in the, the spring of next year, should you be successful in the election to try to reduce that rating fee since they've already done the work one time. But I would expect that's going to cost, you know, an additional 12, $15,000. We'll see exactly where that comes out. More pertinent to the discussion around cost isn't necessarily the financing, other than the interest rate risk, which certainly is substantial, but I can't pretend to have a crystal ball to tell you where interest rates are going to be come February, March of 2023. And I don't think there's anybody on earth that can. But what we have seen is the cost of, of construction continue to climb. Weather, steel prices come down and, and you know, we've seen lumber coming down and spot prices of, of those various commodities are starting to decline. How long does that take to materialize to the folks on the ground that are actually purchasing it? I don't know, but those costs have gone up and I suspect that they're not going to come back down with the tight labor market that we continue to have. I think we'll continue to see that be an issue. You talk about inflation on a national level. I continue to see, and I work all around the state, there is no slowdown in Texas. And what slowdown there is, we certainly may feel over the coming months, but rooftops are still getting built. There's still strong demand for that labor and for those materials as people from California, New York, wherever that are flooding to Texas. That keeps our market very strong, which I think is a great thing. But I also think that that's going to kind of provide that pushback of seeing any commodities prices come down. So I would expect street and drainage improvements to at least stay at their elevated levels, if not continue to go up however slightly. I'm not an expert in that realm. I'm just using kind of my real world experience of, of sitting through meetings with engineers, et cetera, kind of hearing what they say.
Mr. Paul?
Mr. Friedman, we did the first CO in, I think, November 2020. Is that correct?
I think we sold that in September, closed in October, if I recall.
Right, okay. And of course, the recent attempt. At any time during 2020 or recently, have you ever met with this council in any private meetings that was not open to the public?
With the, no, not with the council, no, with your city managers.
Oh, certainly, certainly, but not with the council. See, a lot of the article, a lot of implications that were going around the city with this petition is that we had not been transparent, we hadn't done this, we hadn't done that, but yet we notify everybody about everything all the time if they choose to look and see. We don't mail a comment out there, everybody, every time we go have a meeting. So I just want to clarify that. Second thing, I believe it cost us 11,000, we blew $11,000 this recently on the, by not going forward with the bond rating that they prevented us, correct?
Mr. Rappley may be able to remind me of the amount, but that sounds about right.
I, I think it was closer to 13, maybe down to 11.
13,000, we got 7,000 for an election. And then, as you said, we're going, we don't know what, we're going to have another 15, $16,000 to go through the rating again. And for transparency, which I'm sorry, I'll be glad to discuss and argue that with anybody that this council has in fact been more than transparent and does its best to try to get people to pay attention, listen and everything. But most people have pretty much recognized they want the streets and drainage done and they know we've been doing that. But to further transparency, is it possible? And I realize you can't pull a crystal ball out. When it comes down to voting to, and we decide to move ahead with the election or not or whatever, I'd like to see two or three examples. What's it going to do to this $400,000 house if the rate's this? If the rate's that? If the rate's this? We can't pin it down, these are unusual times. We gotta give the people who are going to vote the opportunity to decide, no, I don't want my taxes go up. Whether, whether it might be, because we don't, we won't know. But I think we as a council owe the citizens the opportunity to go ahead and vote, even though we wanted to do it before, without putting them through this, but here we are. And so I would like to see that we have as much of that type of information available so that there can't be any more miscommunications out there about what's going on, what's not going on. And we'll probably go ahead and continue and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Rappley, with the same project that we've already presented that we wanted to do on the CO. Had we passed it this last time. So those are my comments and I just thought I would like to say it openly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Isbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman, for being here. Thank you for all the counsel that you've given us along the way. Just to follow up a little bit from what Mr. Paul had started to talk about here. I want to go back and make sure my memory is, is correct. When we issued the COs in October of 2020 or in the fall of 2020, I believe our interest rate was 1.49%, something in that area. Is that correct? Is my recollection correct on that?
Exceedingly low.
Yeah, yeah, exceedingly low. And we're, we're grateful that we were able to do that and to give tremendous benefit to the residents as a result of that. When we talked about issuing the second round and you initially presented to us, at that point, you were, what interest rate were you projecting? Do you recall?
From our very first conversations related to it? Probably it, it might've been as low as that, it could've been up to 3.25. I, I get, time has passed. It was very low and they've gone up.
Okay, so yeah, so by that time, let's, let's just say the top end of it is 3, 3.25% interest rate at that time. Today, you said that the interest rates, if I heard you correctly, are 4%. I know we can't extrapolate what's going to happen next year, but as part of our responsibility to plan, I think we always need to think about, you know, things going up, not, you know, always being able to return to 1.49%. So can you quantify for me, help my simple mind to understand, based on the COs that we would like to issue, what 3, 3.25% interest rate versus today's 4% interest rate equates to in terms of additional debt that we would be taking on if we did this today?
I, I don't hold me to this number, but a percent, it's going to run north of six figures. Or it, you know, 100, $200,000, I'd have to go run that. I've had a long day and I, but it's, it's not, it's not a, a small amount of interest for every 100 basis points that, that a $7 million financing is increasing by.
Yeah, and, and, and I won't hold you to it. I appreciate ballparking and I'm not trying to pin anyone down here. I just think it's important when we sit here and, you know, the Express News article and I'm, I'm not going to make any judgment about, you know, what a reporter wrote or didn't wrote, write. But you know, there's the allusion to a $7,000 expense there. We have the allusion here to the, the additional cost of 12, 13,000. We have a intangible to the cost of construction. But I think it's really important for our residents to understand that even if we were able to do this today, that we've already, we're already $100,000 plus more in debt because of this politically motivated petition. And it's really important that we keep in mind that as we go along, if these interest rates go beyond 4%, our residents are going to be asked to take on even more tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars in debt if we're to proceed with that list of streets that the mayor has given to us that still need to be done because of the neglect that of previous city councils in not taking care of the construction, the roadwork that needed to be done here. So I just think it's really important, if we're going to talk about numbers, let's make sure despite the fact that the reporter isn't here, that we understand that the residents of the city, if we were to do this today, are already, would be asked to have to dig deeper into their pockets to pay for something that was purely politically motivated. And I think it's really important to have that context as we move forward and we watch which way interest rates go. Let's hope that they don't go higher. I'm not sure I'm optimistic about that, but I will be hopeful about that. Thank you, Mr. Friedman.
Welcome. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I, I just have a, one comment and one request. The request is, and I'm going to, you know, bounce off of Councilman Paul. We really are looking for data mining so that we can make the case in, again, transparency, but in accuracy. How further delays in these kind of infrastructure projects are going to cost us down the line? I think it was former Councilman Gregory who made this point most forcefully in the last council, that the combination of labor, material and interest rates going up, we're going to potentially turn what would have been an average kind of infrastructure project into one that's literally unattainable. And we have a window in which we can act. And that window, unfortunately, the first good window is gone. But looking forward, I think what we really need to do to demonstrate to our citizens is these kinds of projections, you know, what it's going to cost freeze frame today, what is going to potentially cost us on the day of the election and what is potentially going to cost us in 2020, 2023. It's hard to say, but it's here. Would you be in a position to help us with that kind of data so that we can? Would you be in a position to help us with that kind of data so that we can get it out?
Yeah, I, as I hear y'all speak on that, uh, I think one of the more help, one of the more helpful things, certainly that I'm uh, equipped to handle, uh, or, or to assist with, because trying to estimate what inflation is gonna continue to do or what interest rates could do really is anybody's guess, but is to show this seven million dollars is going to cost in today's market. X millions in interest. If interest rates go up fifty basis points between now and whenever. It's going to be this much more in interest. And you can do that down the line and you can tie that dollar amount back to, what is that amount to? We've talked about the four hundred thousand dollar home is really, you know, a, a, a kind of baseline for all of this underpinning analysis. How does it affect the taxpayer? What is every, pick a number, twenty-five, fifty, a hundred basis points in interest rate movement? What does that equate to on your property tax bill? And that might be a succinct, uh, way of, of kind of, of illustrating uh, your points. Uh, and you can do the same for, you know, that seven million dollar project turns into an eight million dollar project, turns into a nine million dollar project. Uh, is that, is that what I'm hearing would be helpful to be able to, to demonstrate?
We're in a situation, excuse me, unfortunately. We're in a situation now, as you well know, that we're trying to finish and, and work and take care of our streets like Mr. Isbrand said. But we have no idea what the future holds. It's not like it was five years ago or ten years ago. And there are too many variables and, and, but we're asking you to pluck the best you can, and that's all we can ask, but you're better suited to pick the variables than we are.
I'll, I'll be happy to, to, to provide that to you all. I'll say also, because it sounds like this is, um, information for the voters. Often you see with the bond election, uh, whether it's the city or a school, uh, as you call that bond election. Uh, you can create a, a website purely fact-based of here's what the projects are, here's what the expected uh, cost would be and do that pamphlets you mail out, you can put it on the city's website. Uh, and so we can provide some examples of what other of your neighbors have done. Illustrating their proposed bond program impacts, et cetera. Uh, for people to understand the impact and what the projects are and what it is they're being asked to vote yes or no to. So happy to assist.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Uh, council, do we have any more questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Friedman. So my, my hope was that council would be willing to consider, uh, affirming our intent to borrow in August. At this point, if any council wants to make a motion, I'll accept it.
To call an election in August.
Affirming our intent to call an election. Mr. Schnell, you have a comment?
Um, two quick comments. Um, I agree with Mr. Friedman on virtually everything he said, but the thing he said at the end about the fact sheet. Um, that's very important, but it cannot be to recommend a vote in favor or a vote against. It has to be purely factional, factual. It cannot ask the voters to vote for this. It can give the voters the information. No public money can be spent on anything to, it encourage a voter to vote a certain way. Uh, as far as the, um, the, the motion this evening, um, the window for this election to be called is set by, as Mr. Friedman indicated earlier, is a twelve day window, beginning on August tenth, which is the day after your regular meeting in August and ending on August twenty-second. Um, Mr. Rappley has suggested that the, that there be a special meeting on August sixteenth. The quorum for a special meeting is four members of the governing body, not including Mayor Trevino. So when you do decide what that date might be, and if someone's gonna make a motion. Um, let's make sure everyone can take a quick look at calendars to ensure that at least four members elected by, from places one through five, at least four of you will be able to be present at a meeting uh, to act to call the election. I encourage you not to make it the last two or three days because then we don't have time to call another meeting if somebody has an emergency. So I would, would ask that you think in terms of from the tenth to the seventeenth, rather than from the tenth to the twenty-second. In fact, if the twenty seconds is Sunday, we probably can't even have the meeting on a Sunday. Um, if there's a quorum in the room, if the presiding officer is in the room and if the notice to them of the meeting so states, yes, so long as that person on Zoom can be seen and heard one hundred percent of the time. Um, but you still need the quorum in the room, Mr. Paul. For this meeting, we need four in the room. So if one of you is, is, is want to like to participate by Zoom, that will work. But we still need four in the room for the quorum for the special meeting. Again, that's why I, I taking the extra couple of minutes to ask that everyone check their calendars, you know, with last, last meeting. We made a couple of modifications to the budget calendar and people were able to, to do a quick check on their calendars. But this is a little different because if the budget calendar hadn't been approved, Mr. Rappley would have still followed it. This, we don't have a choice. We're stuck with state law. I wish we could do it on August ninth. The law doesn't let us do that. So anywhere from August tenth to August twenty-second, again, we need seventy-two hours to post a meeting. So if we have a, a quorum problem on the nineteenth, we may not be able to have a meeting. Because we're not gonna know about that quorum problem until six thirty or so on the evening of the nineteenth. So I encourage you to do something between the tenth and the seventeenth. Um, I think Mr. Rappley has tentatively suggested the sixteenth.
The sixteenth is a placeholder for a budget workshop if needed, it's on the calendar.
Mr. Isbrand.
So Mayor, your, your ask was, I, I just want to make sure that we, for a motion for the special meeting to call for the election, correct? So it seems that from going through the, the last time we met, that we did go through the schedule of everyone's availability to attend the budget workshops that we had sent, which is consistent with why Mr. Rappley had suggested this. So I would make the motion that we hold a special meeting on Thursday, August sixteenth for the purpose of calling a, the, uh, election on the bonds.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. A second, Mr. May. Uh, do we have any discussion? Ms. Danes?
The sixteenth is a Tuesday.
Yes.
August sixteenth is a Tuesday.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, um, no further questions on favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Uh, Mr. Schnell. Uh, yes, sir. The agenda is already, we've already voted on it. Mr. Schnell, can you opine on that? Please, not to put you on the spot.
Generally speaking, if a majority of the council is inclined to hear a speaker at this time, that would be fine. Um, and that would be the typical approach.
Okay, council, if everybody's willing, uh, yes, sir, just please come up and say your name and address.
Thank you. My name's Rolando Rios. I live at one eighteen broad, uh, one eighteen Dogwood Lane. And first let me thank you for your service. I know that these meetings are time consuming, but it is a service and you're not getting paid. So thank you for your service. Uh, my, my only comment has to do with the article in the newspaper. And my experience with you, because I represent a lot of cities and school districts, is that, uh, these type of, of repairs get worse as time passes on. So my, my urgency is to get it done the sooner the better. And then secondly, uh, the Fed chairman has already said that they're gonna increase the interest rates by seventy-five basis points later this month. So the cost is gonna go up in the financing and also in the damage that's being done to our city, our city streets. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Well, I think, uh, that kind of echoes the sentiments of a lot of residents. We'll do what I can to, to move forward. Uh, next up we have item six point eight, conduct a budget works session one for a twenty twenty-three budget, Mr. Rappley.
Mayor, do you want to take on those other appointments and then we'll come back? Is that fine or?
Uh, we do now. We can do that too. If council's okay with that, then we'll proceed to item six point ten. Discussion of possible action appointments to the Board of Adjustments, Ms. Danes.
Yes, at this time I would like to move to appoint Tom Aiken to the Board of Adjustments.
And I think that's a unilateral appointment, correct, Mr. Schnell?
That's right.
Okay.
He's an existing VOA member, so it's a reappointment.
Okay, continued service.
Yeah.
Um, I'm going to, uh, postpone item six point eleven till the next regularly scheduled meeting regarding the discussion of possible action and appointment of an alternate to the Parks and Projects Commission. Uh, next up we have discussion of possible action and appointing a council liaison to the Parks and Projects Commission. Mr. Isbrand.
Um, Mayor, I'd like to, uh, move that we, uh, point, uh, Mr. Joyce, reappoint Mr. Joyce as the council liaison to the Parks and Projects Commission.
Uh, we have a motion by Mr. Isbrand. A second, Mr. Paul. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? Okay, let the record indicate, uh, Mr. Joyce abstained, but he would support himself, hopefully. Okay, we're gonna go back to six point eight, conduct a budget work session number one for a twenty twenty-three budget. Uh, Mr. Rappley, six point eight preliminary revenues. Go where? Is it on the desktop? Yeah.
See if the clicker's working. If not, Mayor, you might have to operate.
Happy to, oh, there you go.
There we go. Okay, Mayor and Council, this is our first budget workshop for the FY or indoor the development towards adoption of the FY twenty-three, uh, budget. Um, some of the major areas, obviously, we'll start tonight with revenue. Next week we'll have, um, our departments, uh, give presentations, um, regarding their current budgets and discussions of sort of what they may or may not need in their next budget. Uh, we will discuss the tax rate in a future meeting and then ultimately early August submit the FY twenty-three proposed budget. Once this takes place, we'll have a series of meetings to go over that proposed budgets and include or not include things that have been discussed and or approved by city council. Which will give us our adopted budget. So preliminary revenues, I'd like to kind of just cover some of the large, um, revenues. Uh, we will not cover, um, ad verum taxes. Um, because as Mr. Friedman said, we have not received everything to put that, uh, piece together of the puzzle called the budget. Uh, sales and tax, mix and beverage, franchise fees, court fees, permit, license, code enforcement, police, fire, revenue, garbage, passports are all, um, main revenues to the general fund. And then, of course, we will talk about council budget goals and objectives. Um, I have some ideas and some things I'd like to look at and to develop this budget and I'm open to obviously what council would like to hear. And then we can discuss the meeting schedule. Right now, sales tax, obviously that's the second biggest revenue to the general fund. Um, we budgeted one million three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Uh, right now, the current allocations towards one point four million right now. So we're, I got an uptick. Uh, we're projecting, um, close to eight conservatively that we're up this time last year for sales tax. And then on average, we're about one million, one sixty-three over the last five years. We are proposing at a conservative measure that we go up one million four hundred and ten thousand. And then the beverage mix tax, uh, at twenty-five thousand. Um, you know, obviously we're hoping that we have a few more retail, um, uh, locations coming aboard, but real recently with, um, you know, Dutch Brothers and Golden Chick coming aboard. We'll obviously see, um, a movement, uh, with increases in our sales tax, hopefully. Uh, we'll continue to monitor that sales tax over the next, uh, two months as we work towards adoption of the budget. Franchise fees, those are pretty stable, um, due to legislative changes last few years. Um, we pretty much know exactly what we're getting in for some of the utility companies. And so we are on trending to, uh, meet the four hundred and seventy thousand that we budgeted for proposed revenue this year. And so we're staying conservative to maintain that four hundred and seventy thousand level. Uh, court revenue, um, I would say, you know, due to COVID and, and other means that we saw a drop in, um, revenue with, with court. Um, obviously, as we talked about last year, um, our officers were, were working towards, um, moving forward with traffic violations as they did, not as much during twenty twenty in the, the midst of COVID. Um, but as you can see, um, our, our revenue is, is on an uptick with court. Um, you know, the last two years have been down, but now we see a, 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 a nice uptick to revenue. Um, that's in part, I think a lot has to do with the traffic enforcement officer that was approved, um, and really just monitoring the enforcement of our streets and Northwest Military for speeders. But right now, um, you know, we looking at the five-year average about seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Um, right now, we had, in the adopted budget, we had, we had plugged in six hundred and fifteen thousand. Um, we're projecting closer to about seven hundred thousand. That's six ninety-five is really conservative. However, I think we will obviously pass the seven hundred thousand and for next year's proposed revenue, we're putting it back at seven hundred thousand. This is permitting fees, inspection licenses. Um, in this category, we've seen obviously a increase of commercial and residential inspections. We've also changed our fee schedule related to fire plan review, fire inspection, COs is a separate revenue column now, and so we'll be able to monitor and track those. Uh, we're looking at about two hundred and twenty thousand as our proposed revenue for next year. Um, one hundred and eighty was plugged in for revenue last year, so we'll obviously be up probably closer to forty thousand. So we're gonna try to stick with that two hundred and twenty thousand. If you see there aggregately, we're looking at about two hundred and eighty-five thousand total in that category. Uh, which is a, is a pretty big swing in the permit inspections category. So obviously we see a lot of developments and, you know, a lot of reconstruction by residential homes being done here. Uh, residential garbage fees, Mr. Harada's favorite. So, um, what we've been doing is catching up over the years, you know, as we've talked the last two budgets. Most specifically, we have worked to catch up because the landfill costs are on the rise. And so we've tried to work with waste management to try to figure out and capture what is the, the, the next year's, um, rate, and so we can try to capture that in the line fill item. Um, Ms. Davis was able to get ahold of waste management and tell us, starting in October, what we're looking at next year's projection, so we can capture that in the landfill costs for the line items. What we've done here is over the last, if you recall, council, we did fifty cents in twenty-one and then we did a dollar fifty last year. Um, last year, we didn't really start that fifty cent increase until July, I think it was July of twenty twenty-one last year. So only captured about fifty cent increase. This year, um, and that's per taking it to council, going to Saws, notifying residents, there's about a three-month gap in there. So they actually start billing. So we captured about six months last year of fifty cent increase. This year, uh, as of July first, the dollar fifty is plugged in. So the next six months or so, we'll capture the dollar fifty increase. What the ultimate goal is by this F twenty-three budget is that we are working towards balancing out uh, revenue and expenditures and, and almost fully catching up. Um, this is a slide here. So now we have twenty-seven dollars. Uh, we worked. The cost of the sanitation obviously went up here. Um, but as we move towards, uh, FY twenty-three, we're looking at about five hundred and twenty-six thousand with the full two dollar increase being a total of twenty-seven for an entire year. So that'll get us closer to balancing out revenues that come. So that'll get us closer to balancing out revenues that come in to match the expenditures in the sanitation fund, which again, I hate to say, as I've said, the last two budget meetings should have been done in previous years, but we're working to catch up, and I think by next year, we'll almost see a balance. That increase has also allowed us to do the dumpsters here at City Hall for the brush and leave collection. Also, the bulk drop off, which will happen again later this year. These are other preliminary revenues and some of the line items, false alarm fees, fines, restitution, report fingerprints, revenue rescue miscellaneous, and then credit card fees. We're seeing obviously an increase in credit card fees. And actually, we're pretty close or above the, I'd have to say, ask Captain, the revenue for report fees and fingerprints. That line item kind of went down during COVID a couple of years ago, but that's kind of back up. But these are pretty conservative projections for next year's preliminary revenue there. And then our passport office, we still doing passports by appointments. And we're on pace to, to do over 30,000 in passports. And that's just, again, two people right now working that in between their other jobs. So it's able to pick up some revenue to help in, in that area. Sorry. This is just a summary. As I said, property tax will be to determine, but we budgeted 3,722,314. We budgeted sales beverage tax, 1,395. We are, by the end of the year, hoping and projecting that'll be about 4, 1,435,000, which is about a 40,000 increase. Franchise fees are stable. Court warrant revenue, again, as we talked about it, we budgeted or forecasted 615,000. We're actually probably will surpass 700,000, but right now, that's just a conservative number right now, given about an $85,000 increase. Permits, fees, inspections, licenses. Again, that total of that area for revenues was about 230,000. Will probably surpass 285, but again, that's being conservative of about a $55,000 increase in that area. Police, fire stays the same. Collection of revenues right now, because we weren't billing until this year, starting mid-year, it's about the $1.50 increase. We are hoping that it'll get to the 497,500 that we projected, but we might be slightly below that. Miscellaneous revenue stays the same. Interest, we've actually seen a big jump in interest. So right now, I think we're projecting anywhere from 20 to $25,000 in new revenue because of that. And then the passport acceptance office, we are looking to be on pace for what the projected revenue was. Additional items for future consideration, obviously, at a future meeting, we'll start talking about property tax, how that will work and affect into the ad verum rate and potential revenue. Future COLA salary adjustments, obviously, to be determined. Right now, and speaking of apartments, we don't foresee any additional positions in the organization. We will do a rerate for our health insurance, discuss our future capital equipment, future capital projects. Obviously, we don't know yet. If, if we don't have COs like we've had to do major projects, then we're going to have to go back to street maintenance fund and drainage fund to do the minor street projects at that point. And we'll continue with the maintenance plan. We hope to do a large seal coat project next year for maintenance of the streets. Additional review of expensive renewal line items will cover special revenue funds, and then, of course, American Rescue Plan funds. In this budget, we use almost 300,000 of that with a remaining 250. And then I believe next month, we get our next funding of about $550,000, so we will have about $800,000 to consider for different projects for the city. Council budget goals and objectives, I put this here, obviously, this is mine and not mine, it's, it's, it's our organization, it's our discussion with staff. It's some of the things we'd like to review and have council consider from that standpoint. Cities Compensation Retirement Plan, two to one, competitive recruitment. And we'll get into the, the details of public safety, how we're having problems with recruiting and keeping some of our officers due to their retirement system. Review of the Public Safety Compensation, Police and Fire. Another city did a, a very good salary review of our Police and Fire. Again, I think we need to work on that to bring up our Police and Fire salaries that are competitive. And so we work to retain our officers instead of leaving to another city. Because we've seen that, obviously, in council, I've filled you in on vacancy and staffing levels in our police department. I want to continue with the development, beautification and maintenance right away. Possibly look at the gateway monuments that, you know, the Parks and Projects wants to do as well as in the comp plan. So that is a consideration. I want to look at figuring out how we can improve some of the, and continue to maintain some of the, the monuments over there that we've done already on Castle. The next one is to do travertine and then figure out if there's any other areas that we needed to work on beautification. And then the ratification dollars that are in there, is that to continue? Because if text dot doesn't do it, we'll do it ourselves. Health insurance rerate, we'll know more information about that as we move forward. And then quality of life projects, I just put this improvements to the commons because the Parks and Projects just met and they've talked about a number of projects and looking at different amenities for the commons. And so we want to start looking at how we can put money into some of those projects at councils' wish. I just have a list here of next meetings. Obviously, we'll be meeting next week, Monday and Tuesday, Wednesday with the departments. Then we'll get the appraisals from the county. And then we'll be working to put the proposed budget together to submit on August 2nd. And then on August 9th, we will have a regular City Council meeting, discuss the tax rate. And then obviously, we have here August 16th, special meeting if necessary, but obviously, we will have a meeting then. Publish notice, these are our deadlines, we meet publication and notice, public hearing. And then, of course, the workshops, special meeting on the 6th for the budget public hearings. Schedule and announce the tax rate and then adopt the budget, adopt the tax rate on the 13th of September. So. Any questions, Counsel?
Mr. May.
Mr. Rapley, in the audit numbers, I just noticed that year over year, the sales tax revenue went from 2020 compared to 2021, the first and only full pandemic year, an increase of 178,000, which I thought was very robust and very encouraging. I think what I would be interested in knowing is, is there any way we can see more fine tuned reporting on that? I mean, for example, did we eat more? Did we drink more? Did we buy stuff more?
Well, I think, I think if I recall, there was two audits that were given to us that were, I think they were paying the city of San Antonio, but all along should have been paid to the city of Castle Hill, so the Comptroller's Office made two payments to us during that period. So I want to say anywhere from 90 to 100,000 combined of two payments. So that helped boost up that year's sales tax. But I, I'm not sure from a standpoint of, I mean, we track sales tax every month, we look at it from year to year, especially because it impacts our sales tax, CCPD and street maintenance. So I don't know how we, probably a way to drill down, I just don't know for a fact.
Yeah, I think the comptroller has a blue book report. I think we'll have to submit an open records request for that, and it will give a delineated breakdown for all the.
I think that would be helpful, and the reason is because I noticed in the projected budget for next year, it's a rather modest projected increase, it's something like 35,000 to 40,000. And if we can shoot for the stars, of course, that's what everyone is here for. That's what we want to do.
Well, I think it's more of trying to stay conservative, you know, again, if we're about 8% above this time next year and trying to stay anywhere from that 6 to 8% to protect next year's sales tax. But again, I'm optimistic with some of the, not only the, the retail that had just opened, but there's two retail in the pipeline right now, so.
Thank you.
And Mr. Isbrand.
Mr. Rapley, you, you referenced Dutch Brothers and sales tax. Do we have any numbers on what the impact is that they've had so far?
No, I think that's part of maybe drilling down and finding out, because I think in that comptroller's, that blue book, we can find specifically that retailer type of business and that can drill down. And the only way to measure it is, you know, so they opened up in last year in November, I believe. So those wouldn't tell us till November, December, maybe January. So we may be able to look at the last four or five months to see that kind of impact.
Mr. Paul?
Have we had any update on the equipment for the wine bar at the corner of West Avenue in Lock Hill, Selma?
So, no, I have not, and I heard that they're working with TABC right now and their, their movement of their license.
Right, and I know they had problem getting the equipment, I think, I mentioned before too, because it was tied up, okay.
I think that supply chain issue has been addressed, it's just now in TABC's hands, my understanding. It sure would be a benefit to the mixed beverage tax. So.
Counsel, do we have any more questions? Okay, we will proceed to announcements, my mayor and council members.
Council, we'll see you next Tuesday night.
Announcements, American Council members of items of community interest, Mr. Isbrand.
Mayor and Council, I just want to take a, to moment to recognize some of the very good work that's being done in the city to continue to enhance the communication that we have with residents. And Mayor, you always refer to as radical transparency. Well, the channels of communication that we use certainly are impactful in doing that. And we have just had the latest round of revisions to the city's website. It's certainly the ability to find information is even easier. There's still a lot of work to be done there, but I wanted to take a moment to recognize our city intern, Scott Figaroa, who's sitting way in the back in the corner there, who has invested a great deal of time in doing this. I'm sure you all know that like 92% of Americans have internet access or internet use penetration, 82% use social media. So clearly, the work that we do that invest in our digital assets for communicating is our most effective way to continue to get out our word out to residents in addition to the, the mail thing, items that we send out. But this is a lot of work. I know it's been going on for months. I appreciate the chance to work with Mr. Figaro along the way too. And I hope y'all will recognize his good work and encourage people to use the website. All the information is at your fingertips there, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand, Mr. Paul. Mr. May.
I just wanted to thank Councilwoman Beth Danes for attending our first Meet Your Councilman night. It wasn't a huge turnout, but nonetheless, our citizens are already being well informed. Thank you.
Mr. Joyce. Ms. Danes. Okay, wanted to recognize Ms. Danes for her first in-person council meeting. Excited to have you. Thank you to the CHCO for putting on another fabulous event and trying to keep us engaged and cool. And thank you to all my colleagues and everybody at the city that's doing above and beyond so that we can give our citizens more, because they deserve it. That being said, I'll retain a motion to adjourn. Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
First, by Mr. May, and second, by Ms. Danes on favor. Okay, it is 8:15, meeting is adjourned. Everybody have a good evening.